Good evening. The Executive Session of the Wayne Board of Education Regular Meeting of February 25, 2021 was convened virtually and hosted in the Media Center of Anthony Wayne Middle School, 201 Garside Avenue, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. This meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Can I get a mover to reopen? Mr. Giordano, second. Mr. Pavlak, please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albanese.
Here.
Mr. Bubba.
Here.
Mr. Duffy.
Here.
Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Mrs. Kazan.
Here.
Mrs. Kumar.
Here.
Mr. Pavlak.
Here.
Mrs. Putup.
Here.
And Mrs. Shear. I see you and recorded as present.
Okay. Dr. Toback.
So this Board of Education meeting is being held at Anthony Wayne Middle School again, although for, except for a handful of employees, the meeting is largely a virtual meeting. As has been the case throughout the pandemic, the meeting is open for public view and public participation using Zoom and is also broadcast on Channel 77. This evening is devoted, excuse me, this evening is devoted to recognizing our teachers through the Governor's Educator of the Year Program. There are two recipients for each of our 15 schools, so we're thrilled to recognize a total of 30 outstanding educators. The New Jersey Teacher of the Year Program and the Governor's Teacher Educational Services Professionals Recognition Program have been consolidated into the Governor's Educator of the Year Program. This updated program highlights educational innovation, student achievement, rewards of teaching, and important services outside the classroom environment that lead to student success. Further, it seeks to attract public attention to the positive aspects of our educational system. These are extraordinary times, and tonight we celebrate the many extraordinary teachers that serve the children of this community. While we are only permitted to recognize only 30 of the over 800 educators that work in the district due to the requirements of the program, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize all of our staff members who have made an extraordinary effort and have also made many sacrifices during this past year. Thank you to all of our educators for all of your efforts and your commitment to the students and the school system. Also, a special thanks to each of our principals, who did a wonderful job in celebrating the accomplishment of our educators, as well as Tracy Lee, works in our Information Technology Department. She developed an excellent video, which you're about to see in a few moments. Mrs. Reichman will be taking us through the Educator of the Year Program, and we'll go ahead with my administrative report after the Educator of the Year Program.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, I would like to recognize all of our teachers, related service providers, paraprofessionals, nurses, technicians, custodians, clerical staff, transportation workers, and administrators for their ongoing commitment and dedication to our students and school community. This has been a very unique year, and one that changed the way we offer instruction and operate our schools. This year required instructional staff to learn new technology, instruct our at-home learners while also teaching our in-school learners, communicate using Google Classroom and other digital platforms that were entirely new to us, and spend countless hours searching for innovative and creative resources to enhance distance learning while keeping our learners engaged. Our clerical staff and nurses spend countless hours making calls to ensure that our home surveys are completed daily. Facilities and transportation staff work vigilantly to keep our schools sanitized and safe. Technicians work tirelessly to make sure that we have enough devices on hand and are always available to service any devices that need repair. Administrators put in countless hours to devise plans for optimizing the learning environment, all while providing support and communication to each school community. This is work that all of our staff embraced and learned. We are a proud team, and I'm truly honored to be part of such a committed staff of innovative leaders. We worked together to safely open our doors for our students on September 8th and committed ourselves to maintaining the safest environment possible to keep our schools open as much as possible. Thank you and congratulations to all of our staff for your endless contributions to our school community. Tonight, I also have the pleasure to recognize the Wayne School's recipients of the Governor's Educator of the Year Program Awards. This program is designated, designed to highlight educational innovation, student achievement, the rewards of teaching, and the important services outside the classroom environment that lead to student success. This program integrates the Teacher of the Year Program with the Governor's Teacher Educational Services Professional Recognition Program to continue to recognize our state's best teachers and educational service professionals. Tonight, we have a very special video presentation to celebrate our winners. We wish you could have, we could have had you here in person with us, but we know that this is not possible this school year. It's truly an honor for me to be able to recognize all of you for the outstanding work you do each and every day to support our students and educational programs. Tomorrow, the full presentation will be available on our school website. Dr. Burchard, you can start the video.
Sorry, we're having a technical issue. There doesn't seem to be any sound. Sorry for the delay. Bear with us while we try to sort this out.
Hi, this is Dr. Jessica Hammond, Principal of the Prekindness Early Childhood Center. It is a great pleasure to announce the recipient of the first ever Prekindness Early Childhood Center's Governor's Educator of the Year Award to Mrs. Andrea Gilman. Mrs. Gilman, affectionately referred to by her students and families as Miss Andrea, teaches an inclusive preschool classroom of three, four, and five-year-old students with and without disabilities. Andrea embraces both opportunities and challenges with a desire to support students, families, and colleagues. Parents in Andrea's classes often say that she takes care of her students like her own children. Andrea is a true team player and an inspiration to us all here at the Prekindness Early Childhood Center. Mrs. Carrie, or Miss Cynthia, as she is affectionately referred to by our students and families, is a speech and language specialist at the ECC and works with the youngest learners in the district. As a speech and language therapist, Cynthia works directly with preschool students, families, and staff. She is a dedicated and motivated educational services professional who has embraced virtual learning for our students, employing differentiated and specific instructional models directly impacting both students and their families. Cynthia assisted with the opening of the center by meeting with families, teachers, and administrators to ensure smooth transition for our preschool students. She is a consummate professional and is an inspiration to us all here at the Prekindness Early Childhood Center.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nick Grimshaw, and on behalf of the staff, faculty, and students at AP Turghian Elementary School, it is my pleasure to congratulate Mrs. Samara Bonner as our Governor's Educator of the Year recipient. It's easy to see why her students love her, because not only does she engage their curiosity, but also makes, goes out of her way to make sure that they all feel loved, cared for, and accepted. Congratulations, Samara. On behalf of the AP Turghian faculty, staff, and students, it is my pleasure to congratulate Maggie Carruthers as being our Education Specialist of the Year recipient. Maggie's impact has been seen all over the building, providing support whether it's in technology or different instructional strategies to our whole staff as we transition to remote learning. She's been wonderful, giving on-the-minute triage as well as PD, and we are so happy to have her. Congrats, Maggie.
Congratulations to Michelle Thomas, Fallon's Teacher of the Year. Michelle has been with me at Fallon since I got there 16 years ago, and it has been a great pleasure working with her the whole time. She's extremely dedicated to her profession and continually goes above and beyond the board. Mrs. Thomas is loved by her colleagues and her students, who know that she truly cares about their success and well-being. So again, congratulations to a great educator and one of the nicest people in the whole world, Michelle Thomas. Congratulations to Joe Hicksford, James Fallon's Educational Specialist of the Year. In addition to creating innovative and challenging lessons for his media classes, Mr. Hicksford has taken the lead as a technology specialist expert at Fallon. As teachers learn to livestream their instruction for the first time, Mr. Hicksford was there every step of the way to assist them with anything they needed. He's been an unbelievable asset during this very, very challenging year, and that's why he's affectionately known as the Hicksfurnator. Congratulations.
JFK Staff, Students, and Families would like to congratulate third-grade teacher Jen Shay on being selected as this year's Governor's Educator of the Year. Ms. Shay engages students through her sound instructional practices, her high expectations, and innovative learning environment. Students in her class simply have so much fun, they can't wait to come back the next day, and what more can we ask for our teachers? She builds relationships with students and families so that they all feel valued and accepted. The JFK community is truly lucky and proud to have such an exceptional educator among us. She makes us all better. Congratulations, Ms. Shay.
On behalf of the staff, students, and families of JFK, it is my pleasure to congratulate Ms. Maureen Kelly as this year's Governor's Educational Specialist of the Year. As her speech and language teacher, Ms. Kelly aids in students' development of expressive and receptive language, but also helps students to foster confidence so that they can participate both in and out of the classroom. She consistently collaborates and supports both colleagues in the district and in our school building, and we are very proud of her. Congratulations, Ms. Kelly.
On behalf of the students, staff, and community members of Lafayette Elementary School, I would like to congratulate fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Ronnie Patel, on being selected as this year's recipient of the Governor's Educator of the Year Award. School community members describe her as compassionate, engaging, accomplished, dedicated, and we always appreciate her sense of humor and practical jokes. We are constantly impressed with her use of technology, the way she differentiates instruction, and her ability to connect with each and every one of her students. Congratulations to Mrs. Patel on this well-deserved recognition. We wish you continued success at Lafayette Elementary School. On behalf of the students, staff, and community members of Lafayette Elementary School, I would like to congratulate Lafayette Elementary School's Basic Skills Teacher, Mrs. Liz Venesia, on being selected as this year's recipient of the Governor's Educator of the Year Award. Mrs. Venesia was nominated for this award because we noticed how she supports her students in small-group learning, how she rearranges her schedules so that she can work with specific students, and how she helps to build confidence in the children who are in her class. Mrs. Venesia is always willing to provide interventions and strategies to help parents work with their children at home, and is a tremendous resource in INRS meetings. Congratulations to Mrs. Venesia on this well-deserved recognition. We wish you continued success at Lafayette Elementary School.
Congratulations, Jenna Fafaro. You are our Pakenak Governor Educator of the Year, first-grade teacher, extraordinary feedback from parents, from your colleagues, on everything you do to help the students in your class, especially during these difficult times. They are relaxed, the students are relaxed, the parents are informed. Your colleagues tell me that you are the organizer of all of the things that you're working on together as a team. So thank you for everything you do, and congratulations again, Jenna. You richly deserve this award. Congratulations, Dana DeMena, for being our Pakenak Governor's Education Specialist of the Year for 2021. Thank you for everything you've done, Dana. You have been an enormous help. You've helped all your colleagues, you've trained them in iReady and Linkit. Your fantastic communication with parents has been acknowledged in nominations for this, this honor. We appreciate everything you do, and congratulations, Dana.
The Pines Lake community is proud to celebrate our two Governors Educators of the Year. In a year that saw many of our teachers and staff respond with tenacity and care, these two individuals stood out as exemplars in our community for their dedication and leadership. First, I would like to recognize Mrs. Fredericks, one of our speech and language pathologists, for her service to students with communication and language impairments. She has helped individuals with complex communication needs to develop and expand their communication skills, and has consistently shared this expertise with her professional community. She is an advocate for individuals in this community and seeks to ensure that the community provides the appropriate and necessary resources for their authentic inclusion. Most recently, she helped to ensure that a playground in Wayne added a communication board for students with communication impairments. I would also like to recognize Mrs. Carol, one of our second-grade teachers. This year, she exemplified care, concern, and focus as she led her students and colleagues through the challenges of hybrid learning. During the pandemic, she has continued to develop her skills to ensure her students receive the highest quality education possible. Her students are always actively and thoughtfully engaged in instruction, applying skills to new situations, and making connections across the disciplines. She is a building leader who constantly advocates for her colleagues and students. Pines Lake School is thankful for these two educators and their many contributions to our community, and we are honored to recognize them as our Educators of the Year.
Congratulations to Mrs. Alexis Scheck for being named Teacher of the Year for Randall Carter this year. We're so proud of her and all of her commitment to the students of Randall Carter, this year working with the fifth grade and doing, putting together amazing lessons in the area of academic and social-emotional learning. Congratulations and well done. Congratulations to Mrs. Kim DePietras for being named Educator of the Year in Educational Specialist as School Nurse of Randall Carter. We're so proud of her, and what a year to recognize the nurse, the year of the health educator. We couldn't have done all of the craziness without you this year. Congratulations, Mrs. DePietras.
I am so proud to announce Lori Collins as our Teacher of the Year for the 2020-2021 school year. Mrs. Collins is the epitome of what a special education teacher should be. Not only having the expertise and knowledge to teach students in her multiple-disabled classroom, Mrs. Collins also demonstrates her flexibility and patience each and every day. She shows kindness and compassion and puts her whole heart into everything she does. Congratulations, Lori Collins, on receiving this prestigious award. I am honored to announce Catherine Sanders as our Education Specialist of the Year for the 2020-2021 school year. Mrs. Sanders exemplifies what a paraprofessional should be. She has worked with students of all ages and abilities and has always proven herself to be successful. She follows a teacher's lead and supports her students in all environments. Congratulations, Catherine Sanders, on receiving this prestigious award, and thank you for all that you do.
I couldn't help but take this beautiful sunny day to wish Ms. Lauren Peachima Moody congratulations on Tunis Di's Governor's Educator of the Year Award for teachers. Ms. Peachima Moody, you do so much to make all of our kids shine, and I can think of no better way than to honor you with this beautiful sunshine. Thank you for all that you do, and we are so, so proud to have you at Tunis. I wanted to take this opportunity of sunshine and a beautiful day to honor Mrs. Carrie Delabono as Tunis Di's Governor's Educator of the Year Award recipient for Education Specialist. Mrs. Delabono has been absolutely instrumental in supporting our students and staff as we navigate new technological waters. She is beyond helpful and wonderful. Mrs. Delabono, thank you so much for all that you've done.
It gives me great pleasure to congratulate our Governors Educators of the Year for Anthony Wayne Middle School. We have two fine professionals who are student-centered, very talented, and, and very dedicated. To start, our teacher this year is Nicole Marquez. She's an eighth-grade language arts teacher here at Anthony Wayne Middle School. She's been in education for 12 years, all in the Wayne School District. She did start teaching at George Washington Middle School. She's a very kind soul, her students love her, and she's a fantastic teacher. And then our Educational Services Professional is Christopher Vaca. He has spent 20 years as a licensed certified speech-language pathologist, and this is his 11th year at Anthony Wayne Middle School. He started his career in non-public special education, also private practice, and participated in early intervention services. He is an excellent athlete. He has run six marathons and has also been a licensed U.S. soccer referee. Chris is also a kind soul and generous and a valuable member of our learning community. So I congratulate both Chris Vaca and Nicole Marquez.
It is my pleasure to congratulate Ms. Carolyn Leavitts for being recognized as the Teacher of the Year for the George Washington Middle School. Truly, this recognition is well-deserved, and especially for this year. From the day she has arrived at our school, Carolyn has always treated her students and colleagues as they were family. And this year, more than ever, what she has done for our school has truly made the difference for all of us. Thank you for all that you have done and will continue to do. Congratulations, Carolyn. Congratulations to our school nurse, Mrs. Peggy Sarek, for being recognized as the Educational Service Professional for the George Washington Middle School. I could go on for quite some time to list Peggy's accomplishments during her time at our school. However, there are no words to express what she has done for our families and our faculty this year. I know I speak for everyone at GW when I say thank you and congratulations for a well-deserved recognition. Thank you, Peggy.
I'm excited to announce this year's recipient of the Governor's Educator of the Year Award goes to Mrs. Jennifer Burton. Mrs. Burton is one of Skyler's seventh-grade ELA teachers. Her commitment and dedication to her kids is evident in the creative lessons that she makes, as well as her innovative approach she incorporates with technology. I am proud to call Mrs. Burton a colleague and work alongside of her every day. Congratulations, Mrs. Burton, on receiving this year's 2020 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. Our 2020 Governor's Award of the Year for Specialist at Skyler goes to Mrs. Laura Healy. Mrs. Healy is one of the most motivated, tenacious, and supportive teachers I have ever had the pleasure of working with. Her ongoing spirit and positive attitude has been uplifting to our entire staff, and her willingness to share her time and dedication to our teachers and our students has been unyielding. Mrs. Healy has been a foundational support to all of us at Skyler. Congratulations, Mrs. Healy, on the Governor's Specialist Award for 2020.
Hi, everyone. Mr. Ruhick here. I'm the Principal of Wayne Hills High School, and I'd like to congratulate Ms. Donna Delmorel. Ms. Delmorel is an outstanding teacher of both English and journalism for the past 20 years at Wayne Hills. She's our lead teacher, she's our tech trainer, she's our go-to person for school initiatives and district initiatives, as well as being our resident Bruce Springsteen fan and expert. In addition, she's brought our school newspaper, The Patriot Press, into the digital era, and I'd like to congratulate her, and thank you so much. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Bruce Keough, one of our fine guidance counselors. Mr. Keough is one of the most caring and professional people that I know. He spends a tremendous amount of time getting to know each one of his students and creates a personal pathway for each of them to find success in high school. As well, he is a coach. He has coached girls bowling, boys and girls tennis, including 17 straight Seah County Championships for girls tennis. And this is really a testament to Mr. Keough's ability to motivate students not only in his office, but also out in the, the hardwoods and also on the tennis court. Congratulations, Mr. Keough. Thank you so much.
Dorian Amy's hard work and dedication in our community goes beyond the classroom as she engages her students in community-based project lessons. In order to support the Wayne Alliance, Ms. Amy and her students researched and presented their survey findings on drug usage in America, created PSA's Public Service Announcements to educate not only our students, but our community as a whole, about drug addiction and drug prevention in New Jersey. A colleague and nominator had this to say. "Her passion to teach, to make our students high-level thinkers, to give them real-world simulations, and to see every student as individuals with special gifts is in itself remarkable. I couldn't agree more." So congratulations to Ms. Dorian Amy, our Wayne Valley High School Teacher of the Year.
It is with great pleasure I introduce to you our Wayne Valley High School Media Specialist, Barbara Bardy. Barbara is passionate about our Media Center. She works tirelessly to keep our students and staff aware of new resources available to them. She has been a steadfast participant in our professional development offerings, particularly in the area of technology. Her willingness to go above and beyond for her colleagues and our students has certainly made a positive impact. In nominating her, a colleague stated she has been a bright spot and most valuable part of the process to keep our students connected. I couldn't agree more. Congratulations on being selected as our Educational Specialist of the Year.
Well, that was fantastic. Do any of our board members care to make a comment on our Educator of the Year recipients? Mrs. Kumar?
I just want to say congratulations to everyone, and I just know some of you personally, and I know how hard you all have worked this year, so congratulations.
Anyone else? Mrs. Putup?
I would just like... I would just like to add my congratulations also to our teachers and support staff members. Having been a Wayne educator myself, I salute you. Thank you.
Mrs. Shear, sorry.
I just want to congratulate my fellow teachers, especially on winning this year, probably, no matter how many years you've been teaching, one of the hardest years of teaching that you will ever encounter. So congratulations, great job.
Anyone else? Well, I want to echo my colleagues. Congratulations to all of our fine teachers, and this has absolutely been one of the most challenging years for everyone in education, and great work, and thank you for all you do. Dr. Toback, back to you.
Well, I'm just gonna finish my report with just a few more points. First and foremost, we received excellent news from the New Jersey Department of Education regarding our state aid. So our school district will receive an additional $1,343,439 in state aid. This figure, an unexpected increase, places us in an excellent position to establish for the kindergarten program that we've been working on for so many years. So our next board meeting on March 4th, we're going to have more of a discussion about the budget. We'll go well into the budget process, and this is really unexpected and wonderful news. Final part of my report is, is something that is required, so obviously it's not possible to, in any way, shape, or form. So obviously it's not possible to in any way, shape or form follow the Educator of the Year Program successfully. But in this particular case, it's, it's a little bit of a, it's a difficult report that, you know, it's not the most exciting content. So pursuant to the statute, I'm required to report to the Board of Education two times per year at a public meeting all acts of violence, vandalism and harassment, intimidation and bullying which occurred during the previous reporting period. Tonight I'm reporting the following incidents that took place during reporting period one, September 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020, as reported to the New Jersey Department of Education through the Student Safety Data System. SSDS replaces the former Electronic Violence and Vandalism System. It also requires each school district to report more and different data than in the past. For example, all HIV investigations, both alleged and confirmed must now be reported. In addition, all removals, like suspensions for disciplinary reasons, must be reported for both general education and special education students. So the numbers being reported may appear higher in some instances than totals reported in prior years. For that reason, it is tough to draw conclusions on any increases in reported totals due to the state requiring more information under the new system. Our schools continue to maintain an excellent record of investigation documenting reporting and handling incidents in a timely and efficient manner. For the reporting period, September 1st through December 31st of 2020, for the district, there were incidents reported as follows. Two incidents of violence, those include assaults, fights, threats and simple assault. Zero incidents of vandalism, zero weapons offenses, zero instances of substance abuse or suspected substance abuse. Three general code of conduct incidents which led to educational removal and five confirmed incidents of HIV at a total of 15 alleged HIV cases for that reporting period. The five confirmed HIV cases involve the categories of race, one ancestry and national origin, zero religion, zero gender, one sexual orientation, zero power imbalance, one and other, which is two cases distinguishing characteristics of students. Cases were investigated by the school-level anti-bullying specialists with guidance and support by principals and district anti-bullying coordinators. Consequences and remediation efforts for offending students included individual counseling, student and parent conferences and discipline in accordance with the district code of conduct, remedial measures for targeted students, including counseling, support services, parent conferences, schedule changes, stay away agreements, teacher aid monitors during the school day, adult and student pairings and other monitoring measures. In addition, each school has instituted programming, including the district-wide initiative No Place for Hate to reduce bullying and improve school climate. Fast forward now to this reporting period for HIV. During this reporting period, there were two incidents reported as HIV after thorough investigation. None of those reported incidents were found to be actual cases of HIV. That concludes my report.
Are you ready to admit the student representatives this evening? Okay, it's their turn. There we go. Gina Fermi, we'll start with you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me again. Congratulations to Wayne Valley's Boys and Girls Basketball Teams on a very successful season so far. The girls currently hold an 8-1 record with a 36-24 win over Wayne Hills. The boys team is currently 4-1 with a huge win over Fairlawn on Senior Day. Great job to both teams. Congratulations to the girls ski racing team on qualifying for the NJISRA Team State Championships. Senior Julia LaSala came 14th overall in New Jersey at the NJISRA Race of Champions, finishing first in Passaic County and earning third-team All-State honors. In honor of Black History Month, Mrs. Osbyazu and Mrs. Felder's senior physical education classes have been researching trailblazing African-American athletes. Students are working on understanding and discussing the contribution of black athletes, not only to their sport but also to American history. Great job to the Wayne Valley Band on their virtual winter concert last week. Special recognition is in order for featured soloists Michael McGrath, Isabel Mailman, Justin Sonnet, Winston Leaf, Joanna Saxton and Dana Lashinsky. Despite COVID restrictions, the band program has practiced tirelessly for months and presented an incredible show. The Wayne Valley Students Who Code Club has been meeting virtually on a weekly basis. So far this year, club members coded the website page for Wayne Valley's Computer Science Department and are currently working on coding their own original games. Congratulations to senior Gavin Axway on being selected as one of Purdue University's Emerging Leader Scholars. Gavin was chosen out of a highly competitive applicant pool based on his achievement and academic potential in STEM. He will receive a scholarship and many other study abroad and research opportunities from Purdue. Juniors Christopher Cordero, Ryan Kwan and Michael Matthews organized a fundraiser and donation drive for Raphael's Lifehouse, a shelter for homeless and young pregnant women in Elizabeth New Jersey. With contributions from Wayne Valley NHS members, the boys raised $540 in monetary donations and over $2,000 in items. Great job. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I'm on mute. Thank you Gina. Joseph?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'd like to start off by congratulating all of the Governor Educator of the Year Award winners. That's a great honor. After four of the six New Jersey Math League contests, Wayne Hills still remains number one in Passaic County. Wayne Hills was a school with high cumulative score. Jacob Hablitz, grade 12, had a perfect score and also the student with cumulative high score. Congratulations to Todd Green and his team. Congratulations to Wayne Hills sophomore Eunice Chi, who won several awards and honorable mentions for her poetry submissions at the 2021 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Some of her work has advanced to the national level competition. Last year, Eunice won the Scholastic Art and Writing Silver Medal for her poem. On this absence this year, Eunice won the following awards for her eight poetry submissions: Gold Key, Silver Key and Honorable Mentions. The Wayne Hills National Art Honor Society and art students spread love and made Valentines for each of the residents and staff at the Sunrise Assisted Living in Wayne. These beautifully made cards were distributed on Valentine's Day, bringing cheer to many residents. The Wayne Hills Band and the Skyler Colfax Band will be combining for a virtual Band Through the Ages concert. This event showcases our instrumental music students from sixth grade to 12th and gives the students, parents and community a chance to see how our musicians grow throughout their years in our band program. The link will be made available to the public as soon as editing is finished. The Wayne Hills Millennium Winter Guard is, will open its 2021 competitive season with their first virtual competition this Saturday. The guard will be competing in the Mid-Atlantic Indoor Network Circuit that includes guards from all over New Jersey. The Wayne Hills Chapter of TRIM National Music Honor Society has been busy sharing their passion for music with the Wayne community. TRIM has been putting together playlists of songs to go with the school district wellness initiative and writing letters to the assisted living residents about what music means to them. Wayne Hills senior Philip Park won the Jersey Sports Zone North Jersey Game Ball for his basketball performance. His 29-point performance against Lakeland last week earned him the nomination and fans voted him the winner. Congrats Philip.
Did either of you have the donation list or no?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Mr. Alan Tompesku through the Benevity has made a donation in the amount of $557.76 to be used for welcoming students back into the building when virtual learning has ended to Skyler Colfax Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. We enjoy your updates and it's great to hear all the amazing things our students are doing, especially when we can't see them. But thank you both and back to your homework. Okay, that brings us to revisions to the agenda. Mr. Moffett?
As we have a few tonight. We'll start in section T of the emergent items, human resources. Number five, approval of appointments of district staff. Number four, we're going to revise salary to reflect $48,205 prorated. And we are adding an item X1 under emergent school resource legal. We'll be adding an agenda as, as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves a negotiated settlement agreement and release in the matter of BP and BP OBO versus Wayne Township Public Schools, OAL docket number EDS 01134-2021 as attached by reference and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The business administrator and superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of settlement to further implement same. That concludes the additions and revisions to tonight's agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moffett. Before I go into the blurb about the public comments section, I just want to make a couple of points. First is the reopening phase is not on the agenda, so that's not up for discussion in this first public session or comment section. You'll have to wait for the second. And secondly, our board attorney would just like to remind everyone about speaking about our employees. If you could just give us a quick reminder on that, Mr. Gepper.
Yes, people who speak in public do so at their own peril. There's always the possibility that an individual who receives negative comments in public could seek a slander or defamation lawsuit. So we just want to be sure that the public's aware of that before they proceed tonight.
So that includes all of our employees, including our administration and our union officials. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Share? Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Roger Gunnels. I'm calling from 22 LAUAP. So while we're at, while we're at it and we're talking about the educators, I personally would like to dedicate this call to the Wayne parents. You know, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the Educators of the Year for us on this side of the wall because there's apparently a wall that's been built between us here. The parents of Wayne Township, they've added to their already hectic lives the additional duty of teaching children that should be in school. The selfless service dedication integrity of the Wayne parents is a testament to their resolve on the face of tremendous, what I consider to be dereliction and irresponsibility of the Wayne Township school system. Wayne parents have extended themselves to meet the educational needs that might not, that might have not otherwise been met. The exemplary performance of the Wayne Township parents reflects great credit upon themselves and the children they educate. Again, from a, from a fellow parent that's really working hard to educate my child when they should be in school, thank you to all the parents that are out there doing this. And while you might not be recognized by who, but might not be recognized, I want to make sure that you're recognized right now publicly. And again, I thank you. So that's all I have to say.
Next.
Good evening. My name is Eda Ferrante. I am the president of the Wayne Education Association. On behalf of my officers and my association, we would like to add our congratulations to the wonderful recipients of this distinction of Teacher of the Year and Educational Specialist of the Year. They are the most worthy and they are the most worthy of accolades that they have received and are all fine examples of the outstanding educators we have in this district. It is the reason why Wayne schools have seen such success year after year. This year, the award is particularly poignant. Truly heroes, these honorees represent all Wayne educators who, over the last year, demonstrated the resolve in not letting this national crisis get in the way of our children's education. Having never been trained for such a disaster, your teachers took this impossible task of teaching children and worked to provide this community with the support it so desperately needed and the normalcy that they so desperately sought. Despite every technological issue, scheduling and even political challenges, Wayne educators provide our students with the best possible education. I only wish that every teacher, related support provider, secretary, paraprofessional and custodian could have been awarded this prestigious honor. There is little doubt that every year possesses new challenges to face and new obstacles to overcome. But this has been one for the ages. We once again congratulate the members of the Wayne Education Association, our essential working heroes for getting Wayne and its children through this crisis. This community owes you more than it can ever pay. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me? I can't hear you guys, but okay. Rebecca Bradley, thank you. 28 Pittman, please. Um, I, I, I had to log off briefly, so I apologize. I don't know the time limit and I'm, I don't really know exactly what was said, but my, my main, my main.
Bradley?
Yes.
I'll just interrupt you quickly. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you have three minutes, which will start over, but this is agenda items only. The reopening of the school is not on the agenda. That's for the second public portion.
Oh, okay. Then my apologies.
No worries. You can come back in the second portion if it wasn't related to the agenda.
Oh, it wasn't. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for understanding. Okay, can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Share, that concludes our first public portion. Back to the agenda. Okay. We had committees. Ms. Kumar?
Hi, I will be reporting on actually the last meeting my, the education committee met, but I was not here during the public session. So due to the worldwide pandemic, the Education Committee of the Wayne Township Board of Education took place in person and during a Google Meet at approximately 5:00 PM on February 11th, 2021. The meeting adhered to the agenda and began with a brief overview of the minutes from the December 3rd meeting. In attendance was Administrator Donna Reichman and Board of Education Committee members Dawn Kumar, Eileen Albanese and Matt Giordano. A new volunteer club was proposed for Wayne Hills High School and was approved. And we had a few school choice requests to be discussed. And we also went over mid-year update, some of the things that we have been able to get accomplished this year was to open the ECC and moving along with our full-day kindergarten plans, working through some of the distance learning issues, creating the district goal, fight for diversity, equity and inclusion. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Who else has a report? Mr. Giordano?
Thank you, President Kazan. Today, February 25th at 5:00 PM, the Wayne Board of Education Personnel Committee met. Board members who were attendants are myself, Ms. Stacy Share and Ms. Suzanne Put up. Also in attendance was Paul Clark, Director of HR Compliance and Labor Relations. During the meeting, we reviewed the December 17th minutes as the changeover of personnel occurred at this meeting. We also reviewed several HR items. The two big ones we talked about were the ideas about student teachers in person was discussed and ideas about sabbaticals were also discussed at that meeting. And that's will conclude from that personnel committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. Next, Mrs. Albanese.
Thank you. The Communications Committee also met tonight at 5:00 PM. In attendance were Dr. Mark Toback, Board members Eileen Albanese, Dawn Kumar and Michael Bubba. We discussed the response to many emails that the administration and board members have received and the addition of answers to the frequently asked questions as a result of questions asked in those emails. We reviewed many newspaper articles, online communications and we're happy with the way accurate information is being presented based on information that's presented at the meetings. We had some discussions about communication to the Board and to the public at the next meeting and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Albanese. Mr. Pavlak?
Good evening. The Facilities and Transportation Committee met this evening, both virtually and via Zoom. In attendance, Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Duffy, Mr. Blanchard and Mr. Moffett. We had a discussion on both, on external. We had a discussion on external facility permits for both use of in-school gyms and also for field use for the coming spring. We spoke about the generator project where we'll be putting generators into a few of the schools. Looking at, we reviewed the number of power outages of schools and we are going to look at moving forward in the budget with potentially with placing generators in a couple of different locations. We had a legal discussion over some issues. We talked about document storage and archival. We're moving away from paper. We're moving to scan a lot of the paper to save on the cost of storage. And we're also running out of space to put places. Energy savings, the ESAP program, the second phase at Wayne Valley was completed today. And we're moving on to Wayne Hills and then we'll move on to the middle schools afterwards, which this program has saved the district hundreds of thousands of dollars. We, kudos to Mr. Blanchard and his crew for the inordinate amount of snow that they have plowed, shoveled, snowblown, and done everything else with and controlling the ice and the roadways and parking lots in and around our schools. We, so far this year, we used 138,000 tons of salt on our property. Transportation, we had some issues with rebidding added district bus routes. We also looked at doing a joint venture with Lincoln Park to see if we were able to do some shared transportation with some of our added district students. Unfortunately, it was not going to work out with the locations and the number of students. And one good thing, our driver training is up and running and has been. And during some of the downtime in the afternoons, we've been able to facilitate this training with all our drivers online as required by the New Jersey Department of Transportation as well as the National Department of Transportation. And we also had a discussion on some security issues.
Does that conclude the committee reports? Anyone else? I think we got all of them. Hey, thank you, everyone. Let's move some agenda items. Can I get a mover for the public work session? Mr. Pavlak?
Mr. President, I have one item.
Okay, can I get a second? Mr. Duffy? It's Mr. Pavlak and Mr. Duffy, Mr. Moffett. Are there any items for discussion? Does anyone have any questions or comments on the agenda items? Okay, roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albanese? Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Recorded as a yes. Mrs. Share?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes. We have some retirement blurbs to read. Mrs. Putup?
John Solentano. John Solentano has worked in the Wayne Township Public School System for over 20 years. He's one of the first. Can you hear me? Sorry, can you hear me?
You're having a little bit of a glitch there, Mrs. Putup. I think someone else might need to read this. We are having difficulty with your audio.
John Solentano.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Mrs. Putup, I think someone else needs to read your retirement blurb.
Can you hear me now? Yes.
Okay, please mute. Um, okay. I, will you read yours and I'll pass along Mr. Solentano to someone else. Go ahead.
I have pleasure reading the retirement of Mr. Alexander Smith. Alexander Smith will be retiring from the Transportation Department on March 1st, 2021. Alex began his career as a van driver on April 19, 1999. Over the course of his 22-year career of service with the Wayne Township Public Schools, he has been dedicated to his work responsibilities of safely transporting our students each and every day of his employment. Alex has truly been an asset to the Department of Transportation and his commitment of transporting the special needs of transporting the special needs of the district will be hard to replace. His smile, positive attitude, and quick wit will be missed. Mr. Alex, as he is affectionately known by his students, called him enjoying seeing and greeting his students each and every day. Each year, he continued to take several preschool routes, including a midday, so he could take the little preschoolers to school each and every day. The Transportation Department and the Wayne Township Public Schools wish to express their sincere thanks and appreciation for all his outstanding support and dedicated service. From all of your friends and coworkers, best wishes for a long and happy and healthy retirement.
Mr. Giordano?
Thank you. Valley Freestone retired from the Transportation Department on January 21st of 2021. Valley began her career as a van aide in 2013. Over the course of her eight years of service to the Wayne Public Schools, she has been dedicated to assisting students with special needs every day as their ride to and from school. She always made herself available to cover and go on any route, no questions asked. Valley's loving and nurturing attitude was evident daily as she helped, guided, and watched over her students. We thank her for her service. May her retirement allow the time to do the things she loves and avoid the things she doesn't like to do. Valley will be missed but never forgotten. May the next phase of her life bring all that she seeks and even more happiness.
Thank you. Mrs. Share? Going to fill in for Mrs. Putup.
Let's try this again. John Solentano. John Solentano has worked in the Wayne Township Public School System for over 23 years. He was one of the first building technicians in the district who supported our staff with technology. John was instrumental in the rollout of the district's first purchase of teacher computers. He spent over 14 years of his career working at Wayne Hills High School, supporting the staff and students with their technology needs. While there, the Wayne Hills staff embraced him and made him part of their family. He has great memories of the staff he worked with through the years. After Wayne Hills, John went on to work at Skylar Colfax and a few of the district's elementary schools. He always would bring his best effort and helpful attitude to work each day. John is looking forward to spending time with his family and grandchildren. While he will be missed by all of us, he certainly deserves his retirement. His hard work and diligence have greatly benefited our district, and we hope that the remaining employees here will strive to follow his stellar example. We wish you the best in your future endeavors. Retirement will surely offer you many new opportunities, which we know you will embrace wholeheartedly, just as you did at Wayne Township Public Schools. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mrs. Share. Congratulations retirees and thank you for your service to the Wayne School community. It's much appreciated by everyone. Um. Okay, roll call, Mr. Moffett.
For, yeah.
Did we do it already?
I think we're good to go.
I wasn't sure if I did it before the retirees or not.
All agenda items have passed.
Okay, very well. Okay, so then we'll move on to our final public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Share. Okay. Go ahead. Sorry, you're not speaking. Okay, thank you.
How you doing? This is Christian C., 16 Claremont Terrace in beautiful Wayne, New Jersey. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. I have a question. I don't think this has ever been brought up before. At the A.P.T. Hune and Skylar Colfax property, there used to be a tennis court. That tennis court was decommissioned and has now become a supply yard for, I think it's for maybe, you know, winter supplies, whether that be salt or some other things, but it's fairly unsightly. And along with that, there's a number of C-Box shipping containers being used for storage on the piece of land between Skylar Colfax and A.P.T., right by where that tennis court used to be, as well as next to the playground behind, to the left of the A.P.T. Hune. I was just curious if that was going to be permanent structure where we were going to be using that old tennis court as a supply yard? Or if that's something that was of a temporary nature and there's a plan to kind of bring that back to, I guess, a position where it looks a bit better than what it does today.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Bradley. 28 Pittman, please. Um, honestly, I had some questions and then I just sort of felt like not asking them because I feel like at this point the question seems sort of ridiculous because we feel this is in regards to school closing and I would like to urge that we not do preemptive closings and things like that in terms of what we're doing with school openings. We've just begun to move in the right direction. And I guess my call is more to continue in that manner. Why are we not moving more toward a five-day model sooner? It feels as if everything in life has found a way to move forward to almost a normal degree. We all wear masks and continue to go to restaurants and bars and live our lives. And I just would like to know exactly what seems to be the issue with schools that March of 2021 looks identical to April of 2020. Like, why are we this, the only institution that is failing to really move forward when it seems to be an institution most importantly needed? So I would like to know specifically, what are the stumbling blocks that stop schools from moving when every other institution is able to move forward? And if, and if we can pinpoint or at least think about what they are since we're over almost a year into this, what are we have planned to combat things that may come down the pipeline? These, I feel like this excuse now needs to stop. And we need to be, we've moved not an inch in a year as the world has seemed to push forward. And I don't know why we have to drag each other. With that, I'd also like to thank the teachers today for their wonderful effort. Congratulate all the teachers for their well-deserved honor and thank them for their very, very, very hard work and commitments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi there. Cindy Jaffe, 10 Sherwood Street. I would like to refer to the frequently asked questions that were put out today. I feel that for each question, the questions were not actually answered or I have follow-up questions. So in planning for the next reopening phase, you state we are required to distance to the greatest extent possible. What I want to know is, are you required or are you choosing to go by the strictest interpretation of all the guidelines? And if not, these are not new increased guidelines, are they? Why haven't the desk shields, tables, and tents been purchased already anytime in the last year? What have you been waiting for? Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe these are new safety measures. Next, the next frequently asked question, there's two groups of people that are not part of that internal team that you referred to in your response to consulting with and who you have been relying on to plan for reentry. These two groups of people are both students and parents that have very valid perspectives and are on the front lines. Does your team that you referred to include representatives from either of those two groups? And instead of asking about comparing our reopening plan to similar-sized districts, I would suggest that that question be modified. Shouldn't the more relevant question or comparison be how do our class sizes compare to districts that are five days? The size of the district shouldn't matter as much as the number of kids in a class and the space in the classroom in dealing with these things. In regards to your statement that the only teachers that are out are those that have medical reasons that are accommodated by law, I'd like to know, are you saying that every single teacher that is not reporting to work has a documented medical condition protected by law? Because if not, what are we doing about other teachers that maybe say that they're exposed to COVID or they have COVID? Obviously, a valid reason to not go in school, but what kind of protocols are in place to follow up on that? And I guess, you know, just have their reentry back to school in the quickest and safest manner possible. How is all this being handled other than hiring subs to replace those that have been accommodated? What's the long-term plan for all the other reasons in regards to COVID? Again, in terms of you citing guidelines and another question, you again referred to the guidelines, I challenge you again, are you just using the strictest interpretation of all these guidelines? You also mentioned increased instruction time and Wednesdays being back in. I just want to point out that so far, there actually hasn't been increased instruction time except for that crazy intermittent schedule where it increased instruction time by five minutes per class, but it added that hour and a half block in the middle of the day. And Wednesdays haven't started yet, so there hasn't been any increase as of yet. And why can't we ask parents to commit to each other, to a fully virtual or fully hybrid? We've been asking that question since the start of the school year. And this is literally the first time you've even admitted that you can actually ask parents to do that. Why? Why haven't you-
That's your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Katie Clock, 34 Hellkohl Drive. I want to give my congratulations to all the teachers. They have been great, especially in this past year with the pandemic as well. I was just, for the board, thank you for all your hard work. I was just wondering when the next update on the diversity inclusion goal would be. As well, it's just been a couple of months and I was just wondering what the timeline is going to look like as well. I was just wondering who is specifically running the anti-bias trainings? I can't, I was having trouble finding it on the website. So it'd just be super helpful if you could just let me know, like, let us know, like, which specific organization or group that's from as well. Anything to address, there's been some at-large in the world increase in racism and hate towards Asian Americans. And I was just wondering if the board was ever going, would be discussing that. Again, thank you for all of your hard work. It's much appreciated, especially in this pandemic, and you've all been doing great. Sorry, I had more questions. Yeah, and I think that was my main ones, but just thank you again and just appreciate the update. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Julia Hiljidardia, 87 Poplar Road. I have two questions. One, how often do you plan to report district COVID numbers? I have become accustomed to those numbers being reported at every meeting, but they are missing this evening. Two, can you clarify what four hours of active instruction means? For example, if a teacher has taken a PTO day during the virtual day, is it okay for their elementary students to be left to self-teach assignments posted in Google Classroom? Or if an elementary teacher has taken a PTO day during a hybrid day, is it okay to have their in-person students have a substitute and their virtual students be left with assignments posted on Google Classroom and no live instruction? Lastly, yes, this concern has been raised to our building principal, but I want to make you sure that you're all aware that an increasing number of parents are concerned about the age appropriateness of iReady, a tool used for literacy. Our elementary students are taking a mid-year assessment this week. And as someone who sat and watched my first grader in pain as she was presented with question after question that she was unable to answer, it's not okay when a seven-year-old says to her mother, "Mommy, this test makes me feel dumb." Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Winnie Kivitt, 57 Park Lane. I wanted to make two comments. The first about teacher vaccines, the second, special education accommodations. Senator Teresa Ruiz, Chair of the Senate Education Committee, attended this week's meeting of the Garden State Coalition as part of their monthly meeting. She indicated through the efforts of many groups and individuals, including NJEA, ASSA, NJPSA, and many parent and teacher emails, Trenton is listening. She predicts that by mid-March, Group 1B, which includes school personnel, will be added to the vaccine list. This is encouraging news for our schools. My second comment is about special education students. I attended the October CPAC Parent Advocate Meeting and some parents asked if special education students would be given the opportunity to attend more in-person instruction. Here we are in March and there's been no movement on allowing special education students in Resource Room to attend additional days. I researched all the websites of all the districts open in Passaic County. Side note, Wayne had the best return-to-school COVID website out there of all Passaic County. And many of them do allow special education students to attend four to five days. Hawthorne, Clifton, West Milford, Woodland Park, Little Falls, Totewa, Pompton Lakes, special ed students attend four to five days. If we want to compare Wayne schools to other high-achieving districts, the following districts offer special education students additional in-person instruction. Ridgewood, the largest school district in Bergen County, offers special ed students five days. Fort Lee, four days. Westwood, four days. Montville, five days effective March 8th. Lincoln Park, four days. And Glen Ridge, five days. I read your updated FAQs and you like to compare yourself to Parsippany. They also offer special ed students five days. I urge the board to consider offering additional days to special education students. So some, as some interim steps on our way back to full-time instruction. Thank you for your consideration and congratulations to all the Governor Teachers Awardees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, Michelle Toscano, 15 Kimberly Place. I pretty much just have two questions. I think at this point, going a year into the pandemic and a year into two full school years of children not attending school in person, what is the plan? That's all we want to know. What is the plan? What are we doing to move forward? And how can we make it better? I think every single child right now is feeling what's going on, including my own. We've all had to have counselors step in at moments that we normally would not need that. And to me, that's very sad. Today was my son's first day at school in over 70 days and it felt like a new day to him. What is the plan? That's all we want to know. What is the plan? Are these kids going to be going back to school full-time by the end of this year? Will next year happen? What is the plan? You need to let parents know at this point. Can't keep anything behind us, anything a secret. What is the plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, my name's Nicholas Stellinessis, 576 Valley Road. I'm a seventh grader at Anthony Foyham Middle School. I would like to, I would like to also start with a question. Is there no knowledge if we will be closed two weeks after spring break and be all virtual? And another question, are we going, is the target date that I've seen for us going back to school in April for five days a week? Is that, is, is that going to stay the date? Or is that going to be pushed back and pushed back again and again? And I would just like to know if there will be anything done by the County Board of Education to, to anything to fix, fix this hybrid schedule? Because this hybrid schedule is great. Today was my first day back since the beginning of November. And it felt like it was my first day at school. But it was a very happy moment. I was very happy to be back in my building, seeing my teachers. But it, but it was also difficult to wait for people to log on online. And it is extremely stressful for my teachers too, to have to deal with kids online. And I, and I, I, one, what my question is, will we be going anywhere to fix this? Because it is a problem. Hybrid learning is not, is not that, is not that good as well. It's better than virtual, but will we be doing anything to make hybrid learning work better? And do anything to help these teachers have a little bit of an easier day for, to help the students to not wait for, for 10, 15 minutes to start instruction, to wait for everyone to be online? Who's sleeping, who's not sleeping, who's at the camera, who's not at the camera? Because I, I do not feel like I'm learning. And school is also not just a place of learning. It was always a place of conversation as well. I get that is, that, that is very difficult during the pandemic. But that, that also, shouldn't we be doing something to have these kids like me be able to socialize, be able to interact, not just be, be, be pushed from classroom to classroom masked and just, just completely not doing anything social because there's not much social stuff about this hybrid learning. And I, I just want to know if we're moving anywhere to fix this because it's very difficult for me. It's very difficult for my teachers. And are we just going anywhere?
Thank you very much, Nicholas. Next.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Hi, I'm Evie Wenting, 7 Seminole Avenue, Wayne, New Jersey. Diversity and Inclusion Program was mentioned and I just wanted to make sure that it also includes conservative views. There have been, I have kids in three different schools. In each of the schools, I was met with an instance where children were, I don't want to use the word brainwashed, but brainwashed into certain liberal views, saying that Mr. President Trump had hated black people. That was one instance. And I had sent the inquiry to Mr. Tobak and they handled it, but I just wanted it to be known because parents may not realize, so watch out for those newsela articles. With my kindergarten, or with my first grader, this week it had happened. There was another brain pop that had similar kind of a view about President Barack Obama, which was somewhat based on someone's opinion and not on facts. Again, you're trying to tell the children something that is true and it's not necessarily true. So, long story short, diversity and inclusion needs to also include conservative views and those children who have those views should be protected and not this whole cancel culture that is going on around the world and especially in the United States needs to be, you know, they need to be included. And also I would like to add, I would like to get my school, my kids to school sooner rather than later. They really are happy in the, in school environment full-time, so I support that as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Eileen D'Amico, 29 Manor Drive. I actually have two questions. One of them is, just if, if at some point, someone can point me in the right direction where I can go find the rule that indicates that there can be no consumption of food by students at an outdoor school-sponsored event, whether they be on school property or off? That's my first question is where can I find the rule or guideline that states that so that I can read it a little more thoroughly? And I'm going to try, my second question is actually, since Mrs. Jaffe didn't get to finish, I have a copy of some of her questions. So I'm going to try to summarize the last one with regard, and, and she actually was going to address one of the last FAQ, I think, that was sent out about seniors and them getting, you know, why is there not, or what is the plan for seniors for their activities or some of their activities through the end of the year? I'm going to take it a little bit broader than that. It, it just seems, and I guess the question is, in general, why is it that this district always seems to be, especially with regards to the reopening and all these plans, reactive instead of proactive? We are obviously a very large district and you would think that, if anything, should be setting the example and leading the way in terms of proactive. And quite honestly, that doesn't seem to be the case. And if it is, to echo then as well, Mrs., I think it was Mrs. Toscano's question or questions, then why is the plan, if there's a plan in place and multiple plans in place, why are they a big secret? If we are truly being proactive and there are plans in place, why are they not being shared? And if the answer is, we don't know what the plans are, well, why not? We shouldn't at this point have just a Plan A. We should have a Plan B and a Plan C and maybe even a Plan D. These things aren't new. They're not unknown. There has to be a plan. So the question is, why are we constantly reactive instead of proactive? And if there are plans, what are they? All of them. The current plan and the backup plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Tori Esposito, 47 Woodlot Road in Wayne. My first question is, where's Dr. Goldberg been? He came on when the case counts were high and we haven't heard from him since. So as a paid employee that the board pays, can we please get him on the next Board of Ed? And again, I asked the question last, last session. When they do go, the full days, the two, three in April? Are the remote, are the, are the co, are the remote kids, the hybrid kids that are not in school that day, are they expected to stay on until 3:20? So now they are on the computer even longer? So I need to understand what that schedule looks like for the kids that aren't in that day. And then to just echo the points about school, the longer that these kids are not in there, they're getting a sense that school is not safe and they're, they're never going to want to go back. You know, you have little kids, elementary kids that want nothing to do with it. They feel like that, you know, kids will say, "I'm, I'm dropping out of school." So the, the sooner they get back, the better. Other districts are doing it. Let's move in that step. And again, if we can't get them back this year, five days, what faith do we have in the 12 months when everybody's out at the pool or at the beach getting a tan, that we're going to go back in some capacity, five days in the, in, in, in the fall? So now you have people that are looking at private schools actually moving out of the town, moving to, to towns that can do this. So let's, let's be a little bit more transparent, share the plan for September, not, not just counting the days till June 22nd that, that the school year is going to end because September is going to be here before you know it. And these kids got to get back to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a move to close public portion? Mr. Giordano, second. Mrs. Scher. Okay. Dr. Tobak, here to address some of these questions.
So let's go from the top. Christian C. asked a question about the tennis court that is decommissioned between APT and Skyler Colfax. So yes, it is used for supplies and is used as a, as a location that's out of the way and something that has a hard surface as an area to store things primarily for the winter months. And so it has been used in that way. We apologize if members of the community find it unsightly. We think it is somewhat out of the way, but certainly we can look at that as we move forward. The C-boxes that are located throughout the district are used for storage. So the fact is that while we have a pandemic going on, we had to clear out virtually every single thing in every classroom. So the idea is to, to allow students into the classroom and to meet the standards that are established by the state in terms of what a classroom should look like. While we have this pandemic, most of the teaching supplies, most everything that we don't absolutely need on any given day have been moved to these C-boxes. So they are not permanent additions. They're used for storage. And once the pandemic is over, hopefully most of them will go back to whoever the owner is, release them. With regard to Mrs. Bradley's question about school closings, school openings. So just, just a quick reminder that I don't believe that the March of 2021 looks the same as April of 2020. In April of 2020, schools were closed. We were in remote instruction. And it appears every day that things were going to get worse and they did get worse for a period of time. March of 2020, 21 is, it's the spring. It's a time for hope and it's a time for rejuvenation. So the, I guess the important thing in addressing the questions that have been asked. Next board meeting, on the fourth, we are going to have a significant discussion about the final part of the school year and what that's going to look like and some recommendations. But it's also going to involve the community feedback. So it's a public work session. And the public work session involves proposals and other information that we share with the Board of Education. And that will include some of the questions that have been asked tonight, a little more specific information about that. And then at the following meeting, the board will have an opportunity to modify, approve, depends on what happens. But we have to understand that a decision will be made based on the input from the whole community. We do need, we do recognize that in the coming weeks, it is a time to do a survey to find out more about the questions that parents have. While I do understand that there are a number of parents that are very committed to seeing their children return to school, it's also important to consider that there's many parents who still have their children out of school. In fact, there is signs of progress in that, in our last reporting period from the principals. There were about 520 students that decided to return to district for hybrid instruction, but there was another approximately 420 that went out. So we did have an increase overall across the district of 100 students that are coming back. But that is not also by any means an overwhelming number. And like I said, we did have a significant number of students that decided to go and attend school on a remote basis. So we do look forward to, to moving forward. We do look forward to sharing a, a more of a plan. Tonight's meeting was really intended as an opportunity to recognize our teachers and our educators of the year. And that's pretty much what, you know, what we did. But we can talk a little bit more about some of the questions that were out there. As far as, I guess Mrs. Jaffe had a number of questions about the reopening. So just to, to be clear, the school district has had cohorts. And so desk shields have been purchased. We had this district purchase desk shields available to staff members. And we also had the Wayne Education Association also purchased desk shields. We've purchased more desk shields. Based on the number of students in school, we do not need the number of desk shields that we have. Like I said, there is an additional order that will allow us to take a variety of actions when it comes to the next few months. But ultimately, we have, at this point, we have, we have the ability to socially distant our students. So the question regarding class sizes, that would have to be something that we would have to look at further. When Mrs. Jaffe asked about that question, there was a question about, are we comparing our schools to other larger districts? So what we responded to on the FAQ was FAQs, frequently asked questions from our parent community that we received by email. So that was not a question that was asked and I did not have an answer at this moment. So as far as questions regarding staff members not reporting to school. Of course, any staff member who is required by the school district to stay home because of quarantining, yeah, we do have staff members like that. Otherwise, we have staff members that are accommodated under Section 504. And those staff members also remain home. So as far as how they're, how that's being handled, we have a procedure for that. After, you know, a certain period of days, we have a medical officer who reviews all the cases, makes determinations about when staff members can return. We do rely on the staff members to truthfully report, you know, the different conditions that lead them to be concerned or require quarantine. Right now, we have 83 students and staff members that are quarantined. And we have a number of cases, but the numbers continue to go down, which leads me to Ms. Darti's question about how often do we plan to report COVID numbers? We do report every meeting. The numbers are much lower from our last meeting, but we do not have a formal report because again, the purpose of this meeting was not to present a new plan. Anytime we take action regarding school reopening or any other decision related to the staff or students or for the community regarding COVID, we always report those numbers. I'm, I'm not sure about the specifics of the question you have about the four hours of active instruction. But certainly it sounds like what you're talking about would not be acceptable, but I would want to know more. Katie Cluck, you raised some questions. We will be reporting on our goal towards the end of the year. So we have two goals for this year. The goal that you're talking about, the The goal that you're talking about, the diversity, equity, inclusion goal is a goal that we'll be reporting on. Probably not next month, but perhaps the following month. Let's see, what other questions do we have here? Okay. Winnie Keavitt. I think it's important to understand the, the effect of the vaccine, of course, is, is an important thing. So yes, conditions are improving. What I have here is about the self-contained students. We do offer self-contained students, four days of instruction, soon to be five days of instruction starting next week. But the in-class support students are the population I assume you're talking about. And those students, we're going to be talking about next week regarding um, their return and what that's going to look like. Michelle Toscano asked about what is the plan? At our last board meeting, we discussed a plan, we showed a plan, we gave a timeline, we provided information about the foundation for that plan. So that is what the plan we're in right now. But like I said, we'll be revealing an additional uh, plan at our March 4th meeting. It's with regard to the question about what is being done for the end of the year. So that question is something that um, is really, it's to be determined. I mean, this pandemic, if, if you, if you talk about, you know, conditions a month ago, Michigan conditions two months ago. Facts change rapidly. Right now, our trend is positive. But in the meantime, we have restrictions in place. We have the government of New Jersey um, calling the shots in many ways regarding things like social distancing and things like that, which is a question that came up. When we have our next meeting, we are going to talk a little bit more, as I mentioned, about a survey. But one of the questions in that survey will involve the comfort level of parents when it comes to, many parents are suggesting that we reduce social distancing. Okay, so the standard is six feet. Just doing our, our research about our plans, we know right now that our Wayne Department of Health, that Say County Department of Health, that the New Jersey Department of Health, that our Executive County Superintendent, all confirm that they still recommend six feet worth of social distancing. That's, that's a consideration for the board. But then, like I said, there are districts that are moving ahead with reducing social distancing and um, using barricades or barriers to um, to, to make sure that ultimately students are safe. So um, how that looks and how the district responds, well, we'll find out more from the survey. Ultimately, if parents feel comfortable with that, then that's something we need to know about. Parents are not comfortable with that and that's something that we'll learn from, from the survey as well. So we'll, we'll see, it'll be really a determination made by the community. I think Ms. Ventig basically made a statement regarding the need for conservative views to be represented. With Ms. D'Amico's um, question about um, food service, I'm not really quite sure about the specifics. So I hesitate to comment on something like that until I know more about the situation. So if you'd like to give me a call tomorrow, that'd be great. And I don't believe that throughout this, um, you know, the pandemic, the district has been reactive. I think if anything, we've been very proactive. We've been booking um, here, there and everywhere for different ways to bring students back to school, to look at different options. To, um, and, and we've had these discussions. I mean, really, we started in the summer, literally with over a thousand people from the public, participating in meetings, commenting, going through all the different scenarios, going through the different options that were available. And we've pretty much kept up that pace all year. We've, we've had a lot of public input regarding any plans that we have. We allow a good amount of time for the community to respond to any plan before acting upon it. And so I think that that's very reasonable. With regard to Mr. Esposito's question about Dr. Goldberg, um, he's a consultant for the district. So um, we did have him attend earlier when there was a great concern about returning to school and how safe it would be. And Dr. Goldberg provided his expertise at that point. If that's something the board would like to have in the future, that's, that's certainly fine with us. We could certainly create an opportunity for that. But at this point, um, we really, you know, most of, most of what we talked about was not in dispute. With regard to the other question about with remote kids expected to stay on until 3:20, I would really like to know more about that. Cause I, I, I don't have the specifics. Okay. And then the other thing Mr. Esposito said was about parents moving out of town to other towns based on their plans, their announced plans for next year regarding schools and their reopening. Firstly, I'm not aware of any, any community that has announced actual specific plans about how they will conduct business next year, only because a lot of that is tied up in executive orders, it's tied up in requirements for social distancing and things like that. So I'm not aware of any district that has a plan like that. And I would be very surprised if anyone was actually leaving town to another town for that specific reason. But if there are communities that have a specific plan set aside for next year, I would love to know more about that. I'm not aware of any and um, certainly we would be interested in learning more about um, what, what schools have a specific plan for next year. I'm sure every school has the following in mind, that we, we want as many students to return to full-time instruction as possible. And that's the overall goal, that's what our goal, I'm sure that's the goal is in every town. But how to get to that point is another question and there's a lot dependent on, on, on what happens. So um, I can't say that um, you know, like I said, I would like to know more about that. I think that, that is a response to all the questions.
Thank you, Dr. Tobak. Obviously, if we overlooked anything.
Oh, I did, you know, I did.
Sorry.
I wrote, I wrote on a, as a, as a part of another speaker's comment. Nicholas, our seventh grader, um, we are going to be open after spring break. And um, we have no plans pushing back any aspect of our schedule. We want to move ahead with our reopening and do as much as we can to get you back in class.
Thank you. I'm sure Nicholas appreciates his answer to his question. But if we overlooked any others, obviously feel free to reach out. But our next meeting is only a week away, so we'll have another presentation ready for you by then. Any old business? New business? Mrs. Share?
I just wanted to ask administration to, being that everything's fluid and we're looking into our plans. I have not read the executive order myself. So I don't, I know that we have to give people the option of virtual or going in. I get that. But I don't think that it states how much time we have to give them. And the more I see it, like especially when you say numbers tonight, like we had 5:20 coming in, but 4:20 going out. I, and I'm going to phrase this incorrect that people will jump on me. But I, I think we're making it almost too easy for people to go in and out. And as someone who's home with a child, listening to them saying, I don't want to go, I want to go. I think some parents might just be like, fine, I'll sign you out or I'm putting you back in. Could we maybe look into, if we're allowed to do it, I don't know, maybe by marking period? Like you sign it, if you say third marking period, you're going to school, then you're going to school. And I, I say that because I think that it will be easier on the administration. Because I know the principals are completely overwhelmed with who's coming in, who's going out, who's right. I think it would be, as a teacher myself, if I'm going to have a whole marking period of kids in front of me, at least I know it's this set group and it's not going to keep changing every two weeks. Maybe that will calm the nerves a little bit. Cause it is scary, you know, you're, you're, it is a scary thought. And I also think that maybe some parents, it will help them decide, are they going to just listen to their kid and make this decision because they don't want to listen to it anymore? Or I, just something, I don't want an answer tonight at all. It just, I really appreciate if you look into that. I feel like it might make some people's lives a little easier in this time, including yours, hopefully. Thank you. And again, congratulations to all the teachers, that is such a great honor. And we are so proud of you. Keep up the hard work. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm on the same note.
Sorry, I was on mute again, Mrs. Kumar.
On the same note, as uh, Mrs. Share just said, um, I do think we need to look into it. We had spoken a little bit about it as sending out a communication and a survey as to parents like, okay, would you be okay with a little bit less flexibility in terms of, even if it were a month? Speaking as someone who's a teach, who was teaching, even just having that, okay, this month, these are my kids is, and I, I understand on the admin side. But at the same time, we have to go with what the community wants and we don't want to shut anyone out either. So we really, as we had said, sending out the survey to figure out exactly where everyone stands. So we can figure out the best way forward with getting the best education for the majority of our students.
Mrs. Puttup?
I participated last for some of the committees when we were looking at reopening schools. Many of the schools around us never opened. There are some schools that are just opening in March and they've been closed since near the beginning of last year. Getting into proactive and reactive. It's harder to really be proactive when you're dealing with a pandemic, the likes of which we haven't seen before. And a lot of what we do, which is being proactive, is dependent on the community. If you decide to hold Halloween parties, if you decide to not socially distance, if your social life is more important than your child's educational life, then that impacts the school district, every child in our care. And that's the bottom line, the education of our children. And you have, the community has to take responsibility so that we can be more proactive. So please, follow the guidelines. Please get a vaccine as soon as you possibly can. I know it's difficult right now, but more is being made available very soon. And just be aware of the fact that our district is dependent on you. Our success is dependent on you. Thank you. Congratulations again to all you terrific teachers.
Anyone else? Once again, I'd like to congratulate all of our teachers and service providers of the year. We can't run a school district without you. Our teachers have really had a challenging year and this, this year more than ever. We, we congratulate you, we appreciate you and you are all deserving of the honor. I could address some of the negative comments, but I just, I refuse to. I know what our staff does, I know what our administration does, I know the challenges we faced. And we, we can't possibly tell you everything we're doing. We'd spend seven days a week having meetings. It's, it's not part of our job to keep you that in the loop. Especially when we're dealing with a situation where it's a complete unknown. It's a complete unknown to us. The, the guidelines haven't changed. We're still where we were since the executive order was released and um, we'll be there until it changes. I personally have looked at what other school districts are doing and I think Wayne has done an excellent job. We've done everything we can. When we were out, it was because we quite frankly, just couldn't staff our buildings. And it's not because teachers were taking un, unneeded time off. That's just, it's a ridiculous notion. I'm sorry, I'm frustrated. You get to criticize, but some of the criticism is just, it's off base, it's out of line. Make unfair comparisons to other districts with, with very little fact. Dr. Goldberg is not an employee, he's a consultant, we pay him as needed. And quite frankly, none of the decisions we're making right now are pandemic-based other than the fact that we're still under an executive order. We're, we're trying our best and the administration is trying their best to bring our students back to as closest to normal as we possibly can. And we will continue to do so. That's all I can say, other than we ask you for your patience. And I'm with 7,500 students, I dare say the majority of parents are being patient. But not everyone. And I'm sorry that you are, have reached that level of frustration, but it's not our fault, we're not causing the problem. So with that, I'll take a move to close. We'll go back into executive session, but there will be no action taken. Mrs. Puttup, Mrs. Kumar, wait for the link in an email to return. And Mr. Duffy, to everyone else, um, have a good night and I'll take a mover.
Move to close.
Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Share. Okay, thank you.